Testing. All good? Hello. Bear with us just a moment as we just get everything set up for the Zoom world. Everybody's favorite. Good evening. Is that better? All set? That's better? All right. And are we live on Zoom? We're all set on that? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September 13th, 2022 Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person and virtually, and we're glad you have joined us tonight during public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda. Committee members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand digitally and staff and our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You will then be able to provide comments to council. We'll start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight. If you'll just step to the podium and provide your name and address on the document on the podium, and then we'll go to those joining us remotely. We'll have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. Public participation is limited to once per each public participation session. Due to the breadth of tonight's agenda, we do ask participants keep their comments to under three minutes, and the first session of tonight's public participation will be limited to one hour. Thank you again for joining us, and we will now begin our September 13th council meeting. We'll start with pledge allegiance and moment of silence. And if we can start with roll call with Borough Manager.
Mr. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carmenito.
President.
Ms. Dugan.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb.
Mr. Weiss.
President.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mayor Urschler.
Here.
Manager Assistant Chief and Solicitor here, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We do have one special presentation tonight. We will be getting tonight's agenda by swearing in our brand new medical director. This role will be overseeing our Fire Department Services, which our new fire chief will also be giving some background to. So, Amy, if you want to.
Evening, council members, staff, members of the public. It's my honor and privilege to introduce Dr. Danielle Levine. She's with her husband, Drew Holloway, who is also an EMS professional. Dr. Levine was born and raised in central New Jersey. Her interest in emergency medical services began at a young age. Led her to her local volunteer first aid squad, where she completed an antique course in 2003. Since then, she's consistently worked in EMS, mid-volunteer in paid settings, in 911 response, routine non-emerged transports, and special events. Her EMS experience spans Rhode Island, Connecticut, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. She receives a bachelor's science degree from Brown University in 2009. She graduated from Sydney Kimball Medical College with an MD in 2017. She completed residency in emergency medicine at Thomas Jefferson University Hospital in 2020, followed by a prestigious fellowship in EMS at Yale New Haven Hospital in 2021. Dr. Levine currently works as an emergency medicine attending physician at the hospital University of Pennsylvania. In her free time, she enjoys hiking, camping, collecting maps, and eating blueberries. And who doesn't like blueberries, you know? So, that was a nice tidbit. So, many people have asked, you know, what's going on? Why do we need this medical director? And the change that has come with many things that have happened with fire and emergency services here in Phoenix over the past year with myself coming on board with the opening of the new fire department station with the help of you all here this evening, as continuing that progression as a group, and that includes improving our emergency medical services that are provided to our residents. Dr. Levine will be critical as we start the quick response service program that will be managed under the fire department, and she will be making assuring we are sticking to the law in Pennsylvania. Our providers, both our emergency medical technicians, our emergency medical responders are up the snuff, and she will be providing critical professional guidance to the department. And we're very excited to have her on board. She's joined by friends and family and as well as support for volunteers and staff of the Phoenix Fire Department here this evening. So, thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes of your time, I know you're busy tonight, and turn it back over to President Ewald.
Join us up here, and somebody hold the book for her. We'll take plenty of photos.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. So, if you want to, you're going to be raising your right hand. So, if you want to stand to her left, this is the fun part. You'll stand right here, Danny. And then if you want to turn, face out here, so you face Megan. Yeah. So, if you'd like to raise your right hand, hopefully the microphones are close enough. We'll start with, I state your name.
I, Danielle Levine.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the borough of Phoenixville.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the borough of Phoenixville.
I will with fidelity discharge.
I will with fidelity discharge.
The duties of the Office of Medical Director.
The duties of the Office of Medical Director.
With the Borough of Phoenixville.
With the Borough of Phoenixville.
Fire and Emergency Services Department.
Fire and Emergency Services Department.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The law without consideration.
The law without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color, sex, religious creed.
Color, sex, religious creed.
Sexual orientation, age.
Sexual orientation, age.
National origin, ancestry.
National. Origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
We'll give just a moment as our fire department will likely want to go take some photos in the hallway. Okay. With that, we will continue on with our agenda tonight. Our first round of public participation will begin now. Any members of the public who wish to make public comment, please step to the podium one at a time. There is a sign-in sheet to provide your name and address. And then if there's any members of the public that are wishing to make comment after we are finished with our folks in the room here, we'll then make our way through the online visitors.
I came tonight because of the closing of Bridge Street. I wanted to thank you all for that endeavor. I know you took a lot of time and a lot of thought, and there was a lot of questions and conflict, and God, it was laborious process watching it. But you, I felt like you got all the information that to make a sound decision. And so, even when we get all the information to make sound decisions, sometimes they're not sound. So, I spent the last month talking to all of our tenants on Bridge Street and our tenants on Main Street and Church Street. And to a person, it was a significant endeavor. It allows us to grow as a community, step by step. And so, you all get a lot of criticism and congratulations. I'm not sure how far in between both are, but I got to tell you, it was a well, it was very well done. It was very well thought out. The process was work. And I asked the same, I asked the same five questions of every tenant. And to a person, it saved us, it helped us, it made us, let us grow. And, you know, the trickle-down effect of that is huge. So, I'm here to say thank you. Thank you for making that bold decision. Thank you for making that bold decision in the face of controversy. And that was a great job. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Jane Dougdale, resident of Phoenixville on Morgan Street. Borough Council has reason to be proud of its environmental record. You were first in Chester County to resolve to have 100% renewable energy by 2035. You were the first in the nation to establish a waste energy plan, SOMAX. You're a leader in supporting electric cars by installing municipal charging stations. And we're here tonight to urge you to be a leader again by saving open space, by saving the former kindergarten center for a downtown park. You may have noticed that today's inquiry features other suburban areas that are going this route. We understand that the borough has been encouraged over the last decade or so to develop living areas by filling in spaces inside borough boundaries to prevent the need for development in surrounding greener areas. We suspect that the borough's policies and zonings have been written to enable this. We congratulate you on the subsequent growth of Phoenixville. Not only have you enabled thousands of new residents, you've made us a true destination town. But now, we ask that you recognize that this job of infill development and growth is accomplished. You acknowledged in your recently passed comprehensive plan that now is the time to preserve what is left of the open space in the borough for the benefit of present and future residents. The former kindergarten center is exactly the land needed for a park near the downtown area, one of the prime demands of your comprehensive plan. Please be a leader on this. The school board has voted to sell this property to Toll Brothers. Phoenixville area Friends of Open Space have put out a third petition protesting this sale, and in just a week or so have gathered another almost thousand signatures. This time, we are asking Borough Council to use the eminent domain process to save this property for public use. We realize that eminent domain has a poor reputation, possibly for good cause. It seems that it has been used even by our own school district to take privately owned land for less than fair market value, which is not its intended use. Its intended use is to protect open space land for public use, which is what we are asking you to do. We want you to use the eminent domain process to keep this land in public hands. The eminent domain process will require the court to establish a fair market price for the property, which the buyer would be obliged to pay to the seller, the school district. As you know, we supported the borough's offer last winter to buy this property. Your previous offer was based on the promise of pursuing grants to buy the property, which is what we're proposing that you do again. If you will do this, we will work with you to find grants or other funds to purchase the property from the school district. We ask that one of you move to use eminent domain to save this property and that the rest of you support the motion. Be a leader on this. Thank you.
It's longer to write down my name. Oh. My name is Bob Weber. I'm from the borough. I live on Washington Avenue. I too am interested in seeing a positive direction with the kindergarten center in terms of the highest and best use for our community. In the middle of April, I sent each of you an email regarding the sale of 100 school land to Toll Brothers before it actually happened. And many of you, I think, emphasized with me in terms of wanting to do something to help create more green space, make another park, a learning center, community garden, whatever we can do that's really the best use of that property. At the time, I was told by several of you that it was out of your hands, that the Toll Brothers deal either fell through or they came forward with a plan to develop the property. There was nothing that you, as a Borough Council, could do. I would suggest that there is a third option, proactive option. And you've already heard from Jane a little bit about eminent domain. I'm sure you're all familiar with what it might involve, but if you think about what that means, it probably would get the school board the money that they're trying to get out of the sale of the property faster. We probably would expend less public funds and a lot less of your time and the zoning board's time and everyone else's time fighting for what we think is the right solution. So, we've done a lot of things. We've set up another petition. We have some actions underway, but what it really comes down to is what we want to do as a community with that space. So, we have very encouraging stories or words we've had with the grant fund providers in terms of county level and some of the charities that are very willing to consider putting money into this project. In fact, it meets all of their criteria for what they want to do. It also meets criteria for what our planning commission wants to do with the town. And I'm not against affordable housing. I support affordable housing. I'm just not sure what would be going in there could be considered affordable in that sense, and perhaps the better use of that space would be for public use. So, I too would like someone on the council to make a motion to consider eminent domain and to take action to reach out to the county, and we can provide you some people to talk to if you're not sure who it is there. But we have had a warm reception on that. And the second point I wanted to make is that the offer that was placed by the borough for 1.8 million pending support of grants and so forth was sort of handicapped, in my opinion, because it could only be estimated based on a non-public use, a non-development use, whereas the Toll Brothers is evaluating the property obviously a lot higher than that. So, it just seemed like you tried and you didn't really have a fair shot at it. But I think getting the conservancies behind us and getting some of the grants at the county level, we know that if you guys initiate the process with the county, it stands a much better chance of having a warm reception there as opposed to someone coming to you and saying, oh, well, you may or may not want to do it, but you should do it. But if you go to the county and ask, I think it really can make a big difference. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, council. Thanks for having us here, and thanks for all that you all do. I'm also here to ask you to consider a motion.
I'm sorry, could I ask you to state your name and address?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Lisa Longo, and I live in the borough of Phoenixville. I'm also here to ask you to consider a motion for eminent domain, which is a legal term for obtaining land for greater public use. And so, once someone makes a motion, and we need someone to second that motion. Eminent domain historically has been used to protect public space. For example, Gettysburg was protected via eminent domain. This is the true nature of eminent domain. It is to protect and preserve open space. The court has actually found that the government has the power to condemn property whenever it deems necessary to appropriate the use of the land in the execution of any of its powers granted to it by the Constitution. The establishment of parks and setting aside open space for future generations is the highest outcome of eminent domain. One of the most profound is environmentally sensitive land. Eminent domain has been used to protect it. And I would suggest if we were to ask our neighbors in Montclair if they think this land is environmentally sensitive, I bet they'd say yes. There are concerns about stormwater, what's going to happen if it's developed? And they've already been flooded once. We don't want to put them in further danger. It's not right. The Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania has been very clear that a court has no power to substitute its discretion for that of a condemning entity. The eminent domain must be clearly necessary and consistent with the purpose of the entity. We have a comprehensive plan that calls for this property to be protected, not explicitly. But when I read it and you read that we want more green space accessible to downtown, this is one of the last large parcels that's adjacent to downtown and the river. It can be connected to the Schuylkill River Trail. So, all of the criteria, legal criteria for eminent domain are met by this action. Further, I want to remind you all of your oath. We heard someone take the oath to protect also the Pennsylvania Constitution, which has an article in it that states, "The people have a right to clean air, pure water, and the preservation of the natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment." Pennsylvania's public natural resources are the common property of all the people, including generations yet to come. As a trustee of these resources, the Commonwealth shall conserve and maintain them for the benefit of all the people. That's the oath you all took. The only other point I want to make on this has to do with the Chester County Planning Commission's report on the return on the environment, which clearly points out development can cost up to $1.11 for every dollar in tax revenue you get. That's not a misstatement, so it will cost you 11 cents more than you collect. Open space, on the other hand, can cost as little as seven cents on the dollar. That is significant. And when we're looking at the growth of Phoenixville, you cannot leave out that kind of an economic development issue. The amount of environmental and economic harm that would be caused, again, is your argument why eminent domain is the right thing to do here. So, again, I'm asking a member tonight to make a motion to consider eminent domain, and I'm asking someone to second it. We know that you won't vote on it tonight. You want to put it on the agenda? We asked to be on the agenda, and it was denied. But put a motion out there. Let's make this happen. Protect not only us, but our neighbors. Thank you.
My name is Bill Felton. I've been involved with the revitalization effort, particularly in the downtown here for about 25 years. And, you know, this council and the previous councils have done a great job in supporting that effort through these years. And obviously, we've had great success bringing people to this town, bringing people to live in this town. We've got so many great assets in this town. And I'm here as a friend of the Friends of Open Space, if I didn't mention that. So.
I'm sorry, sir. Could I just ask you to state your address for the record?
I live on Old State Road in Upper Providence, but I own several properties downtown.
Sure. I'm just asking everybody to state their name and their address on the record.
So, you know, as we've come to this point in the development of the town, I think it's imperative that we consider open space and parks because we're going to lose the value of everything that we've created that's attracted, you know, a lot of people to want to live in this town, particularly concerning this kindergarten property. There's a connection to a planned trail that's coming from Schuylkill Township up to the river that's going to follow the east side of the river down to Paulings Road. And this property could be a great connector from the downtown into the, into Valley Forge and heading east. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Tom DeLuca. I live in Fillmore Village on Ashburn Road. My wife and I are new residents to the borough, only living here for less than a month, but homeowners for a few more. This is more of a procedural question or more of a statement, I guess, but there's already two potential projects, Odessa and the one that you'll be speaking of later that are of interest to us. And as a new person, new to local government and also Phoenixville, I find the terminology with preliminary and final approval for projects confusing. Odessa, for example, has that state, I guess that's how that's passed at the moment, based on your, back in December where you approved that project. But what will be very similar to this evening will be that there will be very several either waivers or conditions or other aspects that you demand upon that project be added to it, but you'll go and you'll sign off on something. So, it's hard for someone like just a person in the public to know where a particular project stands. It's my understanding from attending the planning meeting the other evening that as that project stands, they could start that project as is versus potentially coming back to the planning board with a revision that they're speaking of potentially doing. that as that project stands, they could start that project as is versus potentially coming back to the planning board with a revision that they're speaking of potentially doing. The concern with, outside of the confusion with terminology, is also the mechanics of who and how do you guys make sure that all the conditions that you put upon the project literally get baked into the documents, the plans, and they get developed that way? Who is the police to go and confirm all this? And it just seems like if those were separated into preliminary approval, have all documents, official recordings be corrected to, you know, to satisfy your demands, that then you start with a clean set and the public can look at what it's called, what it means, and it would be a delineation between the two terminologies.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Emmeline Fox. I live on First Ave here in the borough. And I don't have a ton to say, but as you all may know, I've come to these meetings before a while back in support of saving the kindergarten center for open space and public good. And I still support that and agree and and ask one of you to make the motion for using eminent domain to save this open space for our community and for someone to second it. I would like to point out that as a part of the comprehensive plan, it literally calls out the goal of having a culinary incubator program in conjunction with community gardens. And it seems pretty amazing that there is a bill of building a school that I presume has some infrastructure that could be used for the industrial kitchen that is called out also in that comprehensive plan. So it seems like kind of such a great opportunity to consider. And not to mention the actual open space and stormwater management opportunities we have with that land by preserving it. It just seems like there's so many great potential. And I know you all have thought about it before, as you did put in an offer for that property, and so do care about it. So just want to add another voice of support to use eminent domain. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin Kerr. I live at Melvin Road in Phoenixville Borough. I'm not here this evening to bully the borough into getting involved in a problem that's clearly not yours. It's fairly obvious that the sale of the K Center is a school district issue, not a committee issue. What I would ask the council is to use the construction phase as an opportunity to work with engineers to conduct a thorough assessment of the city's stormwater infrastructure. Residents near the high school continue to experience flood issues due to outdated stormwater systems. Please take advantage of a complete community planning process to help these residents who experience the dreaded 100-year flood every few years. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dana Waldman. I'm on at 238 Hall Street. So a few months ago, I met this little girl who was learning to ride a bike in the parking lot at the K Center. And so we got to talking and she told me all about the families of deer and fox that live there. I just got immediately so sad, because it's a bit heartbreaking to think about destroying their homes. And destroying the potential for kids and families on the east side of Star Street to have a safe place to play and learn and explore without having to cross a high-traffic street. So and on that note, I learned in your comprehensive plan that we have an EPA walkability rate of 14.95 out of 20, which as it is, is awesome, very exciting. And then think extending the Schuylkill River Trail south with footbridge and access point to this property would be huge. It would make Phoenixville accessible for so many more people. Also listed in your comp plans are goals to establish trail corridors through permanent open space whereby easement and construct the missing trail gaps in the overall regional trail network, as well as supplementing park acreage closer to the town center. I mean, this property is a gold mine of opportunities for Phoenixville. 7.4 acres of existing green space, including 2.4 acres of woodlands, AKA stormwater management, conveniently located close to town center and potential trail extension. Goldmine. I'd also like to reiterate what I've said up here before and what others have just talked about, which is the economic value of protected open space or return on environment. It's well worth considering. Nature provides us with clean water, stormwater management and flood protection, erosion control, carbon sequestration, air pollution removal. All of this for free. So all of the stormwater issues, we're getting protection for free right now. Once it's removed, now the taxpayer has to pay for new infrastructure to replace what's already there, existing, protecting us. So keeping open and green spaces intact is how we could avoid future dollars being spent on new infrastructure and disaster cleanups, like the 100-year flood. Like Ida, like a bunch of floods that are about to be coming. And as a river town, no less, especially given this property's proximity to the river, it's even more essential that we protect it. Those trees are protecting us and our dollars. You have a pretty unique opportunity here. And you have the community's support to pursue eminent domain. We are, I am also asking you to move, make a motion and to second it. So please invest in the future of Phoenixville. One that's walkable, accessible, innovative, sustainable, thriving, and preferably not underwater. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Irene Struk, and I'm a lifelong resident of Phoenixville. In fact, I still live in the house that my parents bought in 1968.
I'm sorry, Irene. Could you state your address for the record, please?
The borough of Phoenixville? 309 Main Street? I heard people say just the borough of Phoenixville.
At least this street would be nice.
309 Main Street. Thank you. And I would like to share with you, maybe from a different perspective, my thoughts about what's happening with the kindergarten center. So I went to Second Avenue School from kindergarten through sixth grade. My teachers were Mrs. Scott, Mrs. Serini, Miss Udini, who became Mrs. Lashewski, Mrs. Devaney, Mrs. Serini again in fifth grade, and then Mr. Hayden. Mr. Hayden, I remember Mr. Hayden taking us to the playground field to play softball. And that was pretty much any day that was a nice day. We were out in that field playing softball. I was not a very good softball player, so I asked my mom for some money, money, and I went to Brant's downtown, if anyone remembers that. And I bought my vinyl knit, and I practiced every day after school. And in the spring of sixth grade, I became a top player, I'm glad to say. In fourth grade, Mrs. Devaney took us to the woods behind the school to find leaves and other things that grow in the woods to see if we could find any animals. And besides the leaves, all the students, but two, also found poison ivy. And the following day, everybody was in class with their poison ivy. I represented Second Avenue, my school, in the spelling bee when I was in fifth grade, which was held in the cafeteria slash auditorium. I have a lot more memories I could share about this wonderful, wonderful school and the school grounds. It pained me to see the auction sale of the building's furniture, but I can understand that. What I cannot understand or support is the possible destruction of a building and land that offers so much, so many useful possibilities, even in the realm of education. Phoenixville has lost so much forested land as it is. Those who have lived here 30 years or more surely remember the beauty and bounty of the woods on the north side, most of which is now gone. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Nicolosi. I live on 206 Washington Avenue. I'm just going to sign my name in here. And you have already heard a lot about the kindergarten center and the ask and why we feel it's important. A couple of things that I did want to call your attention to that you haven't heard so far yet is that eminent domain has been successfully used by other communities locally to take land and preserve it for parks and communities in the local area. It's not a wild, crazy thing that we're proposing here. And also, we did try, very much so, with the school district first before bombarding you. And it's not our intention to bombard you with this ask. But asks to delay and put more thought and time into the the decision that they had made went vastly unheard despite over 1,000 people coming forward and saying that was in the best interest of the community. And I do strongly feel it is in the best interest of the community. The other portion of this is that you do not have to take the entire parcel in eminent domain. If you choose and would want to, you can just take the forested area and the portion that would connect to local trails as could be supported by eminent domain. So there's that. And then I just wanted to throw in and say that I am in support of you considering this. And I know that because of all of the other wonderful work that you have done, that if you do take the time and consider it, you would be able to make the best decision of whether or not to move forward with that or not. That's all I'm asking, is that you do consider that option. And then if it is not in the best, you know, way to move forward, that you then use the other options available to you to make sure that you hold whoever does take control of that, if it is not you, to to the best interest of the public and use your, what is within your power to do so. I am vastly concerned about the infrastructure and the flooding that it could happen. Dina has a vast amount of knowledge in that, and it's a real fear and concern as a taxpayer of this town. And also the per capita increase for the proposed use. So just all of those things we've taken into consideration. And I don't want to take any more of your time, because I know we've taken quite a bit of it already, and thank you.
Dan Mizer, Washington Ave, Phoenixville Borough. As with the majority of everybody I've heard speak so far today, as well as everybody at the school district board meetings, I will also like to talk about preserving the kindergarten center. I would humbly disagree that this is not just an issue for the school district. This is an issue for the community, which we are all part of. I'm not going to pretend to be more eloquent or smarter than many other people here, but I will also make the same ask to consider eminent domain for this property. I know that the borough has, just earlier this year, used eminent domain for a property for the Ferris wheel, which is for the betterment of the community, arguably, but I see it that way. The school district themselves has used eminent domain for the high school, if I'm not mistaken, the Meadowbrook Golf Course. I think they, before my time, but they may have used it because they were dissatisfied with the price that the private seller wanted for the property. But a huge distinction for me here is there is no private party. This is public ownership currently, and it will become public ownership after eminent domain is used, if that is the case. And I think that, as everyone else has said, there are many reasons within your own plans for the community of Phoenixville where this property could benefit the community. And I think that's something that should be discussed. So if it's, if it's a vote tonight, that's awesome, but realistically, I would prefer that everyone have a moment to at least discuss this genuinely. And what I would say, unlike the school district, if we can at least have a public discussion on this, I am not set in stone. I would much rather prefer even your own plan for this, for this property, but if this is a open space, then that is wonderful. But you're already vested in it, because we know that you had interest in this property previously. And I believe that is everything I think at the moment. So thank you.
Good evening. David Lutzger, 243 Morgan Street. Also president of the Green Team of Phoenixville. Just one moment on the TRIS project, which I see on the agenda. I understand that there are some serious concerns from the county and from the Regional Planning Commission about this project as it is proposed. Why are we in a rush? The council is the last resort to say, let's reconsider based on those concerns. Onto the topic at hand. Like some others before me, I want to acknowledge all the great things that this council has done to bring renewable energy and green things in general. In addition to the things that I've mentioned, I know about LED lights, solar energy, I have to mention some X again. It's a, it's a long list. So acknowledging that and thanking you for that, my role is to ask for even more. And the truth is, you're already doing more. I know that there are things in the committees and I have trouble keeping track of keeping up with all of it. But in this case, we're going to talk about the kindergarten center. I know that you all know that eminent domain is an option. So I'm thinking to myself, knowing you and your approach to community service and open land, why not? Why wouldn't you just go ahead and do it? Well, I may not be aware that you're talking about it. But I would understand with the reputation that eminent domain sometimes deservedly has, that it shouldn't come from the council. It should come from the community. And it is. You've heard several of us. You'll hear more on Zoom. Yes, there are 1,000, almost 1,000 signatures on a petition to the borough council to use eminent domain for this property, specifically for that. Now, a cynic might say, oh, 1,000 people, you had 1,000 people in the last petition that went to the school board. Must be the same people. Well, I can tell you it's not. Because we're out in the community in completely different ways. I'm sure that the thousand that signed, the first one will also sign this, but we're not done. And we're going to continue to be in the community. And the truth is, speaking to people on the street, the streets are closed. We're out there. We're talking to people. The overwhelming majority of everyone who hears about this wants to save this property. So open space in a town is a precious. So open space in a town is a precious commodity. Public open space is truly rare. So we have this opportunity to, to create the legacy and preserve this for generations to come. Please make a motion to preserve and protect this land for the community. Thank you.
Hi, there, everybody. My name is Cristofal. I live at 446 Grant Street on the north side of Phoenixville. And it wasn't so long ago that literally right across the street from where I live was 250,000 square foot vacant industrial building, which we now know is Franklin Commons. What an amazing success that this community has made possible. It also wasn't that long ago, the north side was farmland. It's no longer farmland, it's fully developed. But thanks to you and to the community, I'd like to thank you for the amazing resources that are on the north side of the town, which include Reservoir Park, the amazing recreation center that you guys all had an amazing vision and dream to make reality. Didn't just talk about it, you put it together and you found a way to make it happen. And it's an incredible ask for the community. And it was so great to be there, to watch you guys celebrate that building. And thank you very much. The same goes for the fire station that you just opened. Thank you very, very much. With regards to why we're here tonight, I'm part of the Friends of Phoenix Open Space. And if you look at the map that you guys used to have here, I'm not sure where it went. But it's real easy to see what's left in this little part of Phoenixville with the thumb. And the reality is, the last remaining piece of open space is a 7.4 acre property that is a community asset owned by the public and should be continued to be enjoyed by the public. You have the group here behind you that have worked tirelessly to be able to advocate on behalf of what could be there, but we want this to be your dream. We want you to, to, we want to be here to help you make it happen. If you look at examples throughout our state and region and the country, I'm not sure whether you're familiar with Wilson Farm Park in Chester County. That was an eminent domain situation. And it all came together, and it's an incredible asset of the community here in Chester County. The same could happen right there with the kindergarten center. Both are born to have a fear that I want everybody to stay. Greenway, Phoenixville is incredibly blessed to be bounded by the Schuylkill River on the east side of it, but also has the exceptional value French Creek and the Pickering Creek running right into it. And those created an amazing greenway that around that have developed amazing trails that we all know and love, and people come to our town. The Devault Line Trail really is something that is in the plans and could happen. The French Creek Trail is in the plans, it's on your plans, it's to happen. And this piece right here, we create a trail that will connect to Valley Forge Park with the Freedom Trail that Schuylkill Township has done. That could create a loop trail between Paulings Road and the Borough of Phoenixville, as well as all the way down to Valley Forge Park. And this property right here would conjoin with the Holy Ghost property and create an amazing opportunity to preserve that space and leave an amazing legacy that you guys have in your capacity. You were able to find a home for the Phoenix Wheel, and you used that through eminent domain. And now it's going to be an incredible trailhead right here by Borough Hall and all that you've done for the town. So I want to thank you all for your service, and I want you to dream and imagine about what could be. Thank you very much for your time.
I couldn't, my name is Rodney Platt, and I I am so happy about the the timing of this following Chris.
Sir, could you please tell us if you're a resident of Phoenixville or not? Could you please tell us if you're a resident of Phoenixville or not?
I am a Phoenixville resident, is that the question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the borough for its progressive and environmental leadership in the county and the state by joining and pledging to Ready for 100, which was a big deal four years ago. I was here and very proud of Phoenixville. You still make me proud very much. I dream of taking my grandkids to our New River Environmental Education Center to learn about the Schuylkill River's habitat and the status of health in the ecosystem. For instance, what birds, turtles, fish, salamanders, frogs, et cetera, are still living here. Also, which ones should be living there? And which ones are endangered or of concern? Also, and facet, the fun and fascinating facts about species we commonly see, such as the belted kingfisher, who burrows a tunnel to nest in the riverbank above the waterline. Who would have thought something like that? There are lots of such examples to engage and immerse residents of all ages in nature around our beautiful town. And it's two creeks and a river. I also dream of labs included in the conversion of the K Center to the 200 Environmental Education Center, where the water, land, and air can be tested regularly to ensure the inhabitants of all of us are, are in good health. Just 75 years ago, the Schuylkill was quite toxic due to the coal and steel industry's poisoning of the river for many decades. It is so fragile and requires reliable stewardship, and its history and needs must be passed down to future generations. I hope we can for once, highlight and savor and protect our greatest resource. There is no other place in Phoenixville to do this. Thank you for your time.
I'm Mark Connolly, a board member of the Phoenix Iron Canal and Trail Association. You may recognize this map, it's from Comprehensive Plan. And I want to thank everybody that worked on it, that read it, that approved it. It's a good document, it says some great things that have been repeated here tonight. I wanted to read from section five, the discussion of parks. The text in the Comprehensive Plan says, "When considering the overall park acreage, Phoenixville Borough appears to have adequate acreage set aside for its residents. However, based on the 2030 population projection of 22,482 residents, feedback from public input, the community may wish to support its acreage, particularly additional, it may wish to supplement its acreage particularly close to the town center." That's what we're here about. This is the public input, the Comprehensive Plan discussed, and I hope that you're open to it. So thank you very much for everybody considering our appeal. I want to just talk about the development that's going on and the public lands that have been set aside. I think that it's a fair assessment to say that the steel property did not live up to the vision of many people as far as open space. I understand the trail, it's an excellent place to go and to move around, but it's not what most people would consider open space. It's a trail corridor. So you are faced as public servants and elected officials to decide the balance of things in this borough. And I want to talk about the Greek battle that we have here. It's the 900 pound gorilla versus the green god and the green goddess. And what I mean by that is many will think of this situation as a cost issue with regards to eminent domain. That's the 900 pound gorilla. And it's in the room. But I want to speak for the green man and the green goddess. And the green man and the green goddess talk about value. And I just want you to consider what your legacy is. You've approved many plans, and when you pass out of this office and look back at your work, I'm suggesting that you consider your legacy. All of the development that you approve may or may not come to be a good memory. But I can guarantee you, because I have been involved in the two green sections on this map, Black Rock Preserve and Veterans Park in this town. I've worked with Jonathan Ewald's mother with Brightside Farm in Charlestown. I know, I know these people that worked on this. They consider that their finest work because they looked at the value of it, not the cost of it. So I want to talk, so that's really the legacy question that's going to, you know, cause to have you think about what this is all about. I want to talk about the 18,000 square feet. I'm an energy engineer, I'm a planetear, I care about emissions. That 18,000 square feet is a lot of embedded, paid-for carbon. I hope that it lives on in the kind of things that we've talked about tonight. Culinary, incubator, river education. I serve for Chester County Energy and Advisory Board for the Commissioners. I know that we are actively looking to develop resilience centers. And on the matter of cost, I would suggest that the world we're in today, with the BIL numbers still available from previous legislation to finance this, as well as the Investment Reduction Act, I'm confident that the competence of the administration, the drive and the commitment of this council can see a way through the cost issues and bring this property into the borough's park system. I hope you appreciate the illustration where I've shown this park. I think you can appreciate that it balances this park, this, this park geography. It's an opportunity to have open land, stay open land, public land, stay public land. This is a tough decision for you. And I don't envy the position you're in, but I honor your deep consideration of your legacy and what people from this community have spoken to you about here tonight. Thank you.
We're 50 minutes in now, so we're going to give the last 10 minutes to anybody on Zoom who'd like to join us for public participation. Again, public participation for this round will conclude at 8:11.
Ms. White, we've turned on your microphone. Shannon, we've turned on your microphone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Shannon, I live on Washington Avenue. I'm also going to speak briefly about the kindergarten center. Tonight, this council and, and other nights, this council has been presented with many reasons why the potential for the kindergarten center property surpasses that of any Toll Brothers townhouses. Accessible open space gives borough residents places to meet and interact, to breathe fresh air and play. The proximity to the Schuylkill River offers unmatched positive environmental potential if left as open space. Unfortunately, it also offers irreparable harm if developed. Irreparable harm, you say? We're talking loss of borough tree canopy, loss of free stormwater mitigation and riparian buffer, habitat loss, loss of free carbon capture, and also safety concerns for new residents of this hypothetical development. If left as open space, it will continue to provide flood mitigation, habitat for the wildlife that's already present, and it will continue to act as a carbon sink, removing carbon and pollutants from the air. Both the borough and county comprehensive plans call for protecting open space. This property is the key to accomplishing several of the environmental and recreational goals listed in the borough's new comprehensive plan. You can read these goals listed in the petition that almost 1,000 residents have signed at this time. To prevent this property from being privatized and taken away from public use is to help our region meet these goals. I can't end without mentioning taxes, because money is important in these types of things. And a report from Chester County Planning Commission shows that the cost of development can result in higher tax increases regardless of increased tax revenue. So if you share this vision that many other residents see, then I ask one of you, I also ask one of you to make a motion tonight to consider saving this property from development by using the process of eminent domain. We're here as your constituents to help you and support you with this. And if there's anyone on the council who needs clarification on any points, we're also open to engaging with you. Thank you.
Ms. White, you should be able to talk. Ms. Kellner, your microphone is unmuted.
Hi, my name is Liz Kellner. I live on Washington Avenue in Phoenixville Borough. As everyone else has said tonight, there is a major need to consider this space for the public community. I've, I've lived in this community for years. I've seen kids learn how to ride their bikes there. I've seen people walk their dogs there. I've seen parents parking, parking space apart during the pandemic to catch up. The public wants this space, they already use it. And many of them wouldn't even be aware that this plan was trying to move forward if the people in this room and on this Zoom call didn't make them aware. We are passionate about this. The people in this community stand to risk their health and water. I urge you to look into a Department of Affairs, the Department of Justice, Office of Public Affairs, article from 2012, talking about the $741 Clean Water Act penalty that Toll Brothers just recently had to pay for their destruction of the Chesapeake Bay watershed. And we, as a town with this much stormwater issue, are not going to be able to recover from, from the damage that Toll Brothers could do. I ask you to act in our best interest, and I ask you to protect us by passing a movement for eminent domain and seconding it. Thank you.
Ms. Strong, you should be able to talk.
Good evening, my name is Randy Strong. I live in the borough on Bridge Street. I just wanted to go on record, I don't really speak publicly at these things, but I just felt compelled to say, to speak about the kindergarten center. So I've been a resident for not very long here in Phoenixville. It's just been a little over Um, so I, I've been a resident for not very long here in Phoenixville. It's just been a little over three years. But I have to say, I've been so impressed with this town. I have never seen any town, I've lived in many towns, and I have never seen anything like this town. There's the people helping people and the sense of community. And, uh, just what you guys did, the Borough Council during COVID, uh, you just organized and got things together so quickly, closed the streets, made decisions that sampled the businesses in town. So I just feel that, uh, by allowing Toll Brothers or any other developer to build on this land is just goes against everything that I believe you stand for. It just, just doesn't seem like something that would happen in this town, that you would allow to happen in this town. So I ask you to do whatever is in your power to keep Toll Brothers or any other developer from destroying this beautiful land and use the process of eminent domain. And thank you.
One more.
Mr. Leborsky, your microphone is unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Peter Leborsky, and I live, uh, here in the borough on First Avenue. I've been living here since 2000 and January 2011. And many people have already spoken the things that I believe in. And I'm just wanting to add one thought, which goes along with all those is, if you go up the, the north side across from where I live, one thing you notice is that even though you may not be amidst trees and nature, the proximity of all those trees along the Schuylkill River actually lends a lot of nature to the area. The air is good. You'll hear the birds, the, the oxygen is in the air from all those trees. And even if this kindergarten center land is not near, um, lots of places on this side is actually a lung. And it is, it is doing an air conditioning job too, which nobody else mentioned. That was lost when the steel, that was lost on the school, on the steel, steel plant land, which was a nature park in the budding, um, lost about a million lungs there, but you still had a chance to preserve one big lung there for our air conditioning needs. Uh, all the other needs are there too. It's a call of the heart as well to save nature for our people here. So I hope you, you hear that. It's the call of the heart of a lot of people here to save that land, not just the economics. Thank you.
With that, we'll close the first round of public participation. We will have a second round towards the end of the agenda. Uh, we will move into item five, our consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, there are two items, uh, that have been brought to my attention to pull out into the, the standard agenda, which will be item B two and item C two. Uh, does any member of council have any other items to withdraw from the consent agenda? Or any other questions? With that, we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to approve the consent agenda. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. We'll now go into item six, our communications and council participation.
I will keep it brief in the light of time, but I would encourage the public. We have had a really great and robust social media, so I'd encourage the public to continue to follow us on social media. There's a lot of good updates. Also, a lot of questions I've been getting from the public, um, and correspondence. I'm happy to respond with emails and put you in the right direction to help continue to navigate the website. But there are notifications and alert section that you can sign up for, and I would encourage people to sign up for that because it is a really useful tool. Um, and just so I can steal Peter's thunder a little bit, there are a couple of community events, um, one of which we're voting on tonight. So if it is approved, movie in the park will be occurring. It's a Harry Potter theme in coordination with the J C's and the Colonial Theater, pretty exciting. So hopefully it's approved tonight. Um, that will be happening at our new rec center and field out there, the Patnetal Field on the 24th. That should be an exciting day. Um, Bed Races is coming up. I'll plug that again, but, um, get your beds ready and get registered for that. And a new really great event in October, an uplifting event to, um, benefit healthcare access. Um, so we're doing a call for art, so artists that want to create a bra, um, to raise awareness about mammograms and breast health. That is something that you need to check out on healthcare access's site. So thank you.
James?
Yes, uh, I just wanted to, uh, thank Corporal Judge Nowski and the officers of the First Platoon and Police Administration. On August 19th, I had the pleasure of participating in a ride along. Corporal Dutch Nowski was a gracious and welcoming host, making sure I was able to have an authentic experience. I was continually impressed by the positive and supportive and educational interactions made by the pub, made with the public throughout the evening. I would like to commend the Phoenixville Police Department for all their hard work. They invest in our community and was a pleasure to witness it firsthand. It was really truly a great experience, a ton of fun. So thank you.
Rich?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, I'd like to do a little constituent service here. Mr. DeLuca, the Fillmore Village, you, you raised a couple of questions. Uh, one of them about terminology, it seems very confusing. Yes, it does. And I've been around this stuff for 30 years and, um, I couldn't agree with you more. But as far as preliminary slash final plan goes, as best as I can determine, they are one in the same. So, which is, uh, ve- very odd for that kind of verbiage. And you also asked, who sees that the conditions are met, the conditions that the borough puts on a developer? And that is a task that's charged to borough staff and borough consultants. And if conditions aren't met, they have the authority to shut things down until they are met. So just, just a couple of, uh, quick points there. If you have any other questions, you may contact me at any time.
I just want to congratulate our fire department on their grand opening. Uh, so August 20th, we do have our new fire station. It was a hot day, but, um, I think everybody survived it. And, um, I want to thank all the adjoining mutual aid companies that came out to celebrate. It's not often that we get to do, uh, a celebration of that level. So I want to thank staff for all the, um, all the staff members and all the volunteers at the department that, that put in effort to, uh, to make sure that was a, a proper celebration. With that, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hello, everyone. Thank you all so much for being here in person and those who are here virtually. Um, I especially want to just say thank you all for participating and for being an active part of this community. That's what makes Phoenixville an incredible place, is that we have the opportunity to be together and to have a dialogue and really work together to develop the vision for what we are going to be in the future. So thank you all for doing that. Uh, we've had a very active, uh, month, and we are going to have a very active month, even so, uh, coming up. I wanted to, um, thank, uh, our Congresswoman Chrissy Houlihan, who came to visit the borough, uh, about two weeks ago and met with 50 representatives from the Borough Office of Emergency Management, our fire department, police department, a number of first responders. Um, and it was really, uh, an opportunity to commemorate Phoenixville's response, uh, to Hurricane Ida, not only within our own borough, but, um, also with the residents of Montclair. And so it was really a great opportunity by our Congresswoman to speak to a number of our first responders. And when I say first responders, that, uh, expands well beyond just our police, fire and EMS. That's really also our nonprofits. And, um, a very special shout out to our Borough Sanitation Department that actually went above and beyond, not only to help residents in our own borough, but also, uh, they really responded. Um, one of the first groups to respond in Montclair to help those residents, uh, many of whom have just started to get back into their homes. So, uh, very, very special occasion to really commemorate that and to, um, honor and celebrate the people who are active in this community. We are all certainly connected. Um, also, uh, very special, uh, opportunity over the weekend, we had an EMS bike ride, which is part of the EMS Foundation. It came through, uh, Phoenixville over the weekend, and that actually is to memorialize the 73 individuals in recent times, uh, 73 emergency responders who have died in the line of duty. And so we had over 50 riders come through the borough of Phoenixville. And, um, actually, they went onward to Harrisburg. And a very special congratulations to Karen Williams from our Office of Emergency Management, who was actually awarded their lifetime achievement award for, uh, emergency services in Harrisburg on Saturday. A special, uh, thank you to the Phoenixville Area School District. Their welcome back barbecue had close to 4,000 residents and community members, um, as well as students and their families attend. So that was a very exciting event. Uh, we do have, uh, this month is Go Gold for Childhood Cancer Awareness. So you'll see the gold ribbons on all of the, um, light poles downtown, and that's what that's for. Next month, we actually have coming up, you'll see purple for domestic violence awareness. So both very important causes, just to keep your eye out for. Now, we have, uh, coming up, uh, next month. So starting November, uh, September 17th, we have the Green Earth Festival, Wolf Jam and Andre Thornton Day. On the 18th, we have Sir Optimist Bingo. On the 24th, Bistroon Bridge is celebrating their 13th anniversary, along with having an Oktoberfest. On the 30th, uh, we have Bridgetoberfest, which is being done in conjunction with Sly Fox and the Chamber of Commerce. On the first, we have Pierogi Fest. There are very few dozens of pierogies left from Holy Ghost Church. If you haven't purchased them, please do so online immediately. They won't have actually walk ups. You do have to purchase it online. Also, on the first, we have the Phoenixville Police Association fundraiser, which helps to fund Shop With A Cop, which is an incredible program that brings over 20 students in our school district out with a police officer to make sure that they and their families have the best holiday season they possibly can. And that's going to be on the first. You can check that on the Phoenixville, um, Facebook page, on our, uh, police Facebook page. You can also check out, on the 15th, we'll be having a barbecue throwdown, which, um, our chief over here, uh, Brian Marshall, is actually helping to plan the benefits, uh, Orion Communities. But it is an incredible barbecue event happening in the main and Bridge Street parking lot. On the sixth, we have the Crescendo fundraiser. Crescendo, of course, helping to bring strings, instruments to our, um, students in Barclay Elementary. And then, um, finally, uh, last but not least, uh, I do want to say that we are starting to receive shipments of the bivalent vaccine, which is not only, uh, certainly against one strain of COVID, but also the Omicron strain of, strain of COVID. They are both a Pfizer and Moderna vaccine for anyone interested. Um, if you want to visit the Gateway Pharmacy's website, uh, Gateway does actually have information on how you can receive it. I know there will be a number of clinics that we will be having throughout the community. So those who are interested in receiving the bivalent vaccine that is available and will be coming into our community very, very soon. Again, thank you all for being here and thank you for making this an incredible place to live.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, we'll move on to item 13, uh, appointments, calls for residents interested in being appointment for various boards and commissions. We don't have any candidates to be voted on tonight, but we do have some openings that will be, uh, making their way later on in the agenda. So if you're interested in joining a board committee or commission, please reach out to your council ward representative, and they can walk you through the process for both current openings as well as future openings. With that, we have, uh, several items under new business. So I want to make a motion to start.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the anchor ground, um, substituted consideration agreement with the Colonial Theater as provided in our packets and authorize Borough Council, President and Solicitor to make any further, um, actions to satisfy their, uh, the conditions therefore of.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion for the anchor grant? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will be abstaining for this one, so it'll be seven zero one.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the staff recommendation to award the 2023 chemical bids.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the chemical bids for 2023? Always riveting. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Onto, uh, we have six ordinances and resolutions for tonight. What is council's pleasure for our resolutions?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution acknowledging Jean McNamara for her service on the Borough Beautification Advisory Committee.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? We're sad to see her go, but I do appreciate the service that she's provided over the years. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging Laura Lawrence for her service on the Borough Beautification Advisory Commission. Second.
Motion by Ms. Webb, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Mr. President, I'd also like to make a motion to adopt the resolution exa- acknowledging Jordan Thomas for his service on the Recreation Board.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I will now just take a brief moment to read in these resolutions into the council records, uh, starting with Ms. McNamara's, uh, which afterwards we will send to their, uh, listed address. "A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Jean McNamara as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Jean McNamara served diligently and honorably as chairperson and member of the Beautification Advisory Commission since January 12th, 2021. And whereas Ms. McNamara provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Beautification Advisory Commission and Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Jean McNamara for all of her efforts and commitment to the borough in performing her dedicated responsibilities over the past three years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council and the Borough of Phoenixville that Jean McNamara is recognized and publicly acknowledged for her commitment and efforts in performing her duties and further does offer their best wishes in her future endeavors." Signed by council. Our second resolution of the evening, a resolution of gratitude for the public service of Laura Lorenz as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. "Whereas Laura Lorenz served diligently and honorably as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission since June 8th, 2021. And whereas Ms. Lorenz provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Beautification Advisory Commission and Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Laura Lorenz for all her efforts and commitment to the borough in performing her dedicated responsibilities over the past three years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Laura Lorenz is recognized and publicly acknowledged for her commitment and efforts in performing her duties and further does offer their best wishes in her future endeavors." And lastly, "A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Jordan Thomas as a member of the Recreation Board for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Jordan Thomas served diligently and honorably as a member of the Phoenixville Recreation Board since November 2020. And whereas Mr. Thomas provided an invaluable service to the Phoenixville Recreation Board during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its thanks in full and full appreciation to Jordan Thomas for all of his efforts and commitment to the Recreation Board while performing his duties. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Jordan Thomas is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors." Thank you for everybody who, for those motions. Um, there will be, uh, two openings on beautification and an opening on rec. If anybody is interested, they can contact their Borough Council person. Uh, with that, we have three more items under ordinances and resolutions. What is council's pleasure?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing, uh, the 2023 minimum municipal obligation or the MMO recommended in committee four zero.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley for our annual MMO resolution. Any questions on our MMO? Very good. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend chapter 15 motor vehicle stop signs.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on our, uh, amendments to this chapter? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Um, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the appointment of solicitor interest assessment and attorney fees and collection fees added to the amount collected as part of unpaid municipal claims for delinquent accounts.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. With that, next on our item tonight is a public hearing, uh, amending zoning. What is council's pleasure?
We need a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, I need a motion to recess the public meeting and open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Eight zero into the hearing. So this evening, we're here for a hearing on the consideration of an amendment to chapter twenty-seven of the borough's ordinances, which is the borough zoning ordinance, in order to enact certain updates to the zoning ordinance that will allow for the adaptive reuse of properties in the borough and incentives for doing so, as well as update the placement and access to certain buildings. Since the zoning ordinance is regulated by Article Six of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, we are required to hold a hearing to consider these zoning ordinance amendments. As required by the MPC or the Municipalities Planning Code, the draft adaptive reuse ordinance was shared with the Borough Planning Commission, Chester County Planning Commission, and the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee. The proposed adaptive reuse zoning ordinance amendment is intended to encourage the repurposing of historical and important structures in the borough by providing certain benefits to property owners who choose to do so. In order to ensure that certain, that a certain property qualifies for adaptive reuse, thereby enabling an owner to gain the benefit of certain incentives, such landowner must bring the proposed adaptive reuse before the Borough Council for a conditional use hearing. The zoning ordinance amendment also adds new definitions for duplex dwellings and triplex dwellings and updates permitted building placement and access provisions. Public notice of tonight's hearing was advertised on May thirty, excuse me, that's incorrect. On August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two and September fifth, twenty twenty-two in the Pottstown Mercury and on the borough website. The purpose of the, this hearing is the formal consideration of this ordinance. And I would advise that the public can participate. And that will be available after I read a few exhibits into the record. And those exhibits are exhibit B one, which is the proposed adaptive reuse ordinance. Exhibit B two, which will be the proof of publication of the public notice from the Mercury verifying that the hearing was advertised on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two and September fifth, twenty twenty-two. We have not received that publication, proof of publication yet. Uh, so that will be the exhibit upon receipt. Exhibit B three, cover letter sharing the proposed ordinance with the Chester County Law Library and Pottstown Mercury, sent by the borough manager on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit B four, minutes of the July fourteen, twenty twenty-two Phoenixville Borough Planning Commission meeting. Exhibit B five, the review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission dated July fourteen, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit B six, review letter from the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee dated July twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. And exhibit B seven, public notice for this hearing on the adaptive reuse ordinance. I move those exhibits into the record. And Jean, do you have anything you'd like to add to that summary?
I do not.
With that, I would open the hearing up first to any public comment. I would start with anyone here in person?
Can you clarify for those of us who didn't understand most of what you just said, what, what just happened?
Sure, and I'd have to ask you to state your name and address. Okay, thank you. Um, so we tonight have proposed a zoning ordinance amendment and there's certain amendments to the borough ordinance which requires a hearing. And you may have heard earlier tonight that there were some ordinances passed that didn't require a hearing. This is slightly different when it's subdivision land development or zoning. This ordinance kind of has two parts or maybe three. I'll describe the maybe smaller is unfair to those portions, but um, one of the first things we did is we added some definitions of a duplex and a triplex um, to our zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, we also updated the provisions of building placement, which will have an effect on uh, where the build two line is for new development, meaning like how far from the street compared to other buildings on the same block uh, will need to be. Um, other things that it affects is whether parking can be in certain places and it limits parking to not be in front yards and that type of thing. But probably this ordinance is termed the adaptive reuse ordinance because the bulk of it deals with encouraging adaptive reuse. And we have intentionally not defined exactly what a historical or significant um, building is. And that's something that someone uh, would have to come before Borough Council and prove.
Get established. Perfect.
Right.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you so much.
Yep, no problem.
Lisa Longo, Anderson Ave. Just a quick question. When you looked at this, there are some implications for properties that have gotten federal funds. And so then there's additional environmental requirements when you're going to do this kind of adaptive changes. Was that taken into account in this ordinance?
Uh, the Federal Register of Historical um, structures. I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the term, but it was considered and that is one of the uh, elements that can be used to prove that you qualify for an adaptive reuse.
Good, thank you.
Do we have any other public participation in person? Do we have any on Zoom?
I have no hands raised.
Okay, seeing none, I would now uh, open the hearing up to questions from Borough Council.
Um, yeah. Clarify for me the process. It sounded like you said that somebody attempting to do an adaptive reuse under this ordinance would come for a conditional use hearing before the council. Would it not go through Planning Commission first? But it would come directly to us? I just to understand the flow.
So any development would come through Planning Commission. Um, however, there are certain developments where uh, when you're only renovating the bones, the inside uh, that avoid Planning Commission. Uh, however, in order to take advantage of the incentives, whether you need to go before Planning Commission or not, you would still need to come before Borough Council for a conditional use hearing. And for those in the public who are unfamiliar with conditional use hearings, special exceptions are maybe more commonly known. Uh, under the zoning ordinance, there are uses permitted by right. You don't need any specific permission or you don't need to prove any specific elements in order to engage in those uses in your zoning district. A special exception and a conditional use are uses that are permitted by the zoning ordinance uh, as long as you can prove that you check the boxes, as long as you can prove that you meet the qualifications set out in the zoning ordinance. Uh, so that is under this ordinance what someone would have to do. They would need to come before Borough Council and prove that they have met the conditions in this ordinance. Thank you. Any other questions from council? With that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and resume the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the adaptive reuse zoning ordinance amendment as presented this evening.
So moved.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussions evening?
If I may make one point for discussion, the, the regional planning committee did review the ordinance as the solicitor mentioned, and they did find it consistent with the regional plan.
Thank you. I do appreciate this, uh, the work of staff consultants on this. I think it is a, a good step forward um, and, and smart amendments to our ordinances.
Agreed. I also appreciate the public's participation. We don't always get that. Um, so it was nice to have people ask questions. I know it can be confusing. I've had to educate myself. So um, I encourage you all to do the same and, and reach out to us.
I, I do have one other further clarification. The incentives that are uh, defined in the ordinance. Those are at the Borough Council's discretion. They, so they can ask for X. Uh, and then it's at our discretion to grant some, all or none. Is that, is that how the law works?
That's correct, and I expect there would be one or two that a landowner who comes before Borough Council would specifically want. Uh, now, you know, I think we've all had enough experience that probably some landowners will come before us asking for all of them and we might only find that one or two are justified. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Back to me. All right. We'll move on to reports of committees, boards and commissions. We'll start with Planning Commission, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the Planning Commission met, did not have an August meeting. Uh, we did just meet on uh, um, last Thursday um, for a couple of sketch plans, initial submissions. I don't really need to go into those because they're sketch plans, so they'll be coming through. We are however, um, talking tonight and um, I have a, the Tri-S project is before us. It was approved originally in, in the July Planning Commission meeting, but uh, needed further refinement before we could make it. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution officially approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for the development known as Tri-S as recommended by the Planning Commission in their action memo of July twenty-first, uh, seven zero.
Second.
Move motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion?
I give you a quick summary of the project. It's in, obviously been in your packets, but for the, for the purposes of the, the public, that the, the site consists of the property along Fillmore Road surrounding the um, the Sacred Heart Cemetery uh, and along the um, Schuylkill River Trail on the north side of, of Fillmore. Um, the project proposes a fifty-eight townhouses and one hundred and thirty-two stacked townhouse units along with internal private paved streets and proposed private and public open spaces, concrete sidewalks, and a uh, trail extension from the existing Schuylkill River Trail uh, to Fillmore Street and Township Line Road. We do have the applicant here tonight. Uh, if the uh, council uh, can answer questions.
Can I add a few?
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Cassandra Kelly. I'm with BL Companies. We're the civil engineer on the project on here on behalf of the applicant. Um, as Mr. Moore said, you know, we've gone through Planning Commission. I feel like we've worked diligently with Planning Commission Borough Staff and the Borough Ca- uh, Consultants to get to this point at Tri-S. Um, we are asking for approval for preliminary final land development. We have seven waivers that I can go through. Um, as additionally, you know, a couple of items since our last Planning Commission meeting, we have gotten our final letter from the fire chief. He requested two additional fire hydrants, which we're happy to comply with, and just some clarification on not having any um, signage or landscaping within some of the turns of the fire truck swing. And again, those are will comply items. Um, we actually did submit our revised land development plan August thirtieth to the borough. That's under review with the um, consultants right now. A couple of things that I wanted to point out specifically about the plan. We do have a little bit over twenty-five percent of the project as open space between both public and private open space. That includes the extension of Schuylkill River Trail, a dog park, you know, open space with specific landscape plantings, butterfly gardens, recreating courtyards and central locations within this development. Um, additionally, we have dedicated additional right of way along Fillmore Street for a potential future improvement of the Fillmore Street Township Line Spring Ave, Spring City intersection. And one of the things that we worked very closely with Planning Commission on was the trees on the property. So we had an arborist do a study where he looked at the condition of every tree on site. Um, there are, within the project area, there is eighty-nine healthy trees on site. Within the project area, there's eighty-nine healthy trees. Sixty-four of those trees are on site within our property. Of those sixty-four trees, we are preserving thirty-seven. We are removing twenty-seven. However, we are replacing those twenty-seven at the regulated tree replacement rate, which is not required by ordinance, but that is what the applicant is doing. Um, I'd like to go through the waivers now unless anyone has any questions. Okay. Waiver number one from section twenty-two dash four ten to A talks about adequate site distance along the curves of the center line of the road. The requirement is twenty feet. We have two, Row A and Row B, which are at a hundred and ninety feet and sixty feet respectively. We've mitigated for this partly because of the circulation on site. We have um, intersections that are controlled with stop signs. Waiver number two from section twenty-two dash five oh two one C three A talks about trees over six inches in breast height are not allowed to be removed. Again, I kind of went through the tree. Um, for a site that is almost nineteen acres, to remove only sixty-four trees, twenty-seven trees. We went through great lengths to redesign, to work with the existing trees and not only work with the existing trees, but replace as many new trees as possible. Waiver three, section twenty-two, five hundred to A. This one has a couple of parts. Um, there are some environmentally sensitive features that are to be conserved. They include watercourses, steep slopes, very steep slopes and woodlands. So specifically for the watercourses, there is what is a determined to be an ephemeral stream on site, which is essentially like a jurisdictional ditch, meaning it only flows when there's rainwater. We have been, we are applicable under PADEP in US Army Corps of Engineers for that being a waived activity to impact that ephemeral stream. Meaning we essentially got a permit that says you don't need a permit to do this. You fall under this waived category. And we've received that documentation from both PADEP and US Army Corps of Engineers and provided that to the borough. There's further down waiver four, sorry for jumping. There's a riparian corridor associated with that stream. So just kind of note that. Um, steep slopes and very steep slopes, we really have a very small amount. Total combined on site, it's point zero four percent of the tract area. And then finally underneath that is woodlands. So why I kind of went through the healthy trees. There are some trees on site that have been dead or dying disease. However, the determination was that those still classify as woodlands, and so we are impacting those. And again, I went into explaining how we are addressing the trees. Waiver four, section two hundred five oh four point one, which is a riparian corridor management, which talks about if you do have a stream, you have a riparian buffer associated with it. Again, we fall under that waiver request. Waiver five from section twenty-three, three oh eight A talks about post-construction stormwater. Um, there's a requirement to throttle back the stormwater. We're meeting all that. We're capturing all the impervious on site. It's just a little bit of a technicality waiver because on like the downs part of our site, the downhill side, we have open space. We have green area and some of those flows aren't being captured. But again, any new impervious is being captured and treated for stormwater to the borough's ordinance. Waiver six talks about some of our underground stormwater management. So we have both infiltration BMPs and was considered MRCs, which is managed release concept for areas where we don't get infiltration. And some of those areas, we have less than required separation to the building. And some of those areas, we have less than required separation to the buildings. In, in the waiver request, I list all the examples. I won't go through that. But anytime we do have less, we are providing an improvable liner. And finally, waiver seven, section twenty-two, four ten sixty talks about street grades along the intersections for seventy-five feet should be four percent or less. We have some instances where we do have greater than four percent. I list them specifically in here. Most of them are very de minimis, four point one, four point eight. At the max, I believe we're at seven percent. Again, all of these intersections are controlled with stop signs.
Questions for the applicant, questions on the project? I know this is one that we've been working with you on for a while. So the members of council.
I'll offer a couple of observations as Planning Commission liaison for the council, yes, a lot of work. The discussion, those who've ever walked along the Schuylkill River Trail, you know, this is the down slope side. It's steep. So some of these, the, some of the angles and their, and the, particularly the, the last subdivision, the the slope of the roads and so forth are just the nature of the, of the property. The woodlands, there was a lot of discussion. And there was, there was accommodations made. There was reduction and redesign of the, the reduction of the, of the housing units and redesign to preserve as many trees as they, they conceivably could. We, we urged them, and there was a lot of discussion about them preserving more. We came to a median point. As it has been pointed out, and we do have arborist background, this is a declining woodland. Much of the trees that are on the site right now are ash trees that are infected with the ash for, these trees are dying. So the ones that have been preserved are not that, that, that type of tree, so they should continue to, to add to the site. And it will complement Odessa, which is already approved, and kind of put, put a lot more energy, and it builds along, in my, in my opinion, it builds along what we built the Schuylkill River Trail to do. People who will live here, as long as those who live in Odessa, will be able to walk into town or bike into town as part of our fifteen-minute, you know, vision that the, the, the new plan calls for.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Kestra, there was some discussion last month about the road improvements. Could you just talk about that a little bit, what's being proposed as a part of this project?
Sure. So the the project fronts Fillmore Street for a portion of the site, and the the project will improve Fillmore Street from essentially the Township Line Road intersection along the entire frontage of this property. It will increase the lane width on Fillmore, again, on our, our side of the property to the required eleven feet. As part of this project, there's also a connection for water and sewer that goes down Fillmore to Odessa. So Odessa has certain improvements to improve portions of Fillmore Street as well. But essentially, in conjunction with those two projects, Fillmore Street will be upgraded and repaved from Township Line to the end of the Odessa.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Kirk. Thank you. And the, these are questions for you. I, I do have comments afterwards when we get to that. But I, I wanted to ask about the recreation amenities. One, is there a playground? And two, could you enumerate again what the recreation amenities you mentioned are? But my first question is, is there a playground?
No.
Okay.
There's currently not a playground on the site as part of the planned open space. We are connecting to the Schuylkill River Trail, and as part of that, the trail will be extended from the existing Schuylkill Trail to Township Line Road. There is a PennDOT right-of-way, part of the old Cross County connector. With this plan, we are conceptualizing that, and the applicant is going to make a donation. The Borough is in coordination with PennDOT about utilizing that lane. So that trail will exist. We have walking trails throughout the site. We're proposing a dog park. We have specific open space areas that are just meant for space gathering, specific plantings, like I mentioned, the butterfly garden. Also per, like the ordinance requires, we have several courtyards where we have different benches and paver structures to create gathering spaces, open spaces. Those are both private and public. And of course, things like bike racks and trash cans and those type of amendments.
Any other questions for council for that? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. President, I, I thought we were going to have a discussion on this after questions with the applicant.
Oh, sure, we can. Right. Did you still have comments? Can we retract?
I would say the vote was interrupted, so there's nothing to retract.
Mr. Kirkner? Thank you. Well, I you know, this is a hundred ninety townhouses on an old cornfield. I remember when it was a cornfield. This is and, and the surrounding properties are on the other side of the trail, well, either industrial or single-family, detached homes, and across Fillmore Street, single-family detached home, I think. They're at the intersection of Township Line and Fillmore Street. So this is a very dense development, one entrance. One entrance, you're going to have a hundred ninety homes, no playground. There are, there are a lot of waivers here, and there were a number of items in the Regional Planning Committee's consistency review that were found to be not consistent with the regional plan. Not consistent with the Environment and Federal Resources Plan. And the rec, the Planning Committee's recommendation was it should be revised to eliminate disturbance to any stream or wetland areas by maintaining an undisturbed wooded buffer of native plant species along these features that extend eastward to the Schuylkill River Trail corridor. You, you've heard that an ephemeral, ephemeral stream there is going to be piped under, approved, sort of given the blessing of the State Department of Environmental Protection and the Army Corps of Engineers, but it's inconsistent with our regional plan. So take that into consideration. The nearest public park is approximately three quarters miles, three quarter mile away from here. A hundred ninety homes, you know, there are going to be a lot of kids there. And you've heard there is no playground. There's going to be a dog park. There's going to be butterfly gardens. Boy, when I was a kid, I couldn't wait to get to the butterfly garden, right? Man, give me a good butterfly garden to play in. Again, this is from the review letter by the Regional Planning Committee. The plan is not consistent with the PRCP Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. The nearest park is Reservoir Park, three quarters of a mile away. There are no sidewalks along Fillmore Street to get there. Fillmore Street's a dangerous street. And if, if you don't think it's dangerous, I remember there was a pedestrian killed there. It was many, many years ago, when there was a lot less traffic, but it happened. This is the conclusion from the regional plan. The proposed triast development has significant inconsistencies with the land use plan, the environmental resources plan, and the parks and recreation plan. Consistency with the policies of the Energy and Sustainability Plan, Economic Development Plan, Community Facilities Plan, and Transportation Plan should be confirmed by the Borough. Those, those latter items are not in dispute here. But there was a recommendation, density should be reduced to be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and land uses. This is way too dense for this area. As I said, one entrance, one hundred ninety homes, no playgrounds, lot of kids. There, there have been changes made to, to the scale, the pedestrian scale. Stream woodland areas should be undisturbed and appropriately buffered with forest woodland. They're not being undisturbed. They're being piped underground. So, and, you know, I've heard as Jane Dougdale said, say tonight, talk about how proud we should be of our environmental record, and here we are talking about putting a wetland and stream underground. So you can build a hundred ninety homes on an old cornfield next to a cemetery on my side of town. So I, I think this is, and, and I know the developer made some very minor concessions, came in with a plan for a hundred ninety-seven townhouses and stacked townhouses. Now it's a hundred ninety. Wow. So it's you're, you're going to put a lot of traffic on that road, a lot of kids, no place to play, disturbing environmental aspects of it. It, it should be, there, there should be a lot less density there. And like I said, it's not consistent with the regional, we, with the regional plan. So we're in this regional compact. Are we, are we going to stay consistent with it, or are we going to get these review letters and just kind of ignore them? So, but I, I think, I think we should all vote against this and send them back to the drawing board.
So just a couple of points to clarify to your comments. Specifically, there are no wetlands on site. We are not disturbing any wetlands. There are none on site. You know, the, the one entrance is a function of the parcel itself. It actually has very limited road frontage. We, we couldn't, per the ordinance, fit into entrances. We've worked with the Borough. We've worked with the fire chief to do a divided entrance, which in, in some cases provides better protection and is part of the coordination with the Borough on the trail extension to Township Line Road. That will also be an emergency access point as well. So we are working with the site constraints that we have. The density is allowed per the ordinance. We're not asking for any relief for the density. And, you know, specifically for the playground, I, I don't think the applicant has any issue with installing a playground or not. It just hasn't been on the plan based on our conversations with, you know, potential home builders and, and who they think their homeowners will be that may not be needed. It doesn't mean that any of these amenities can't be added in the future. I just want to say it's not like there's a stance against it. The open space and the programming of open space has been a topic in Planning Commission, and there's obviously different views. So I think that's something that the applicant is open to pursuing if there's a need.
Well, I've, I've been around long enough to know that if you don't get it up front, you don't get it later on. I've seen that before. But I haven't seen it yet where you do get it later on. So, and I understand what you're saying about the configuration of the property only allows for one entrance there. But if it only allows for one entrance, why are you putting so much density in there? Okay, the ordinance allows you to do it. If you can, you know, pipe that, 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 that stream and, you know, I guess pave over that environmental area, but I mean, so why are you going for a hundred ninety townhouses? Why not cut it down? No, I know that you can't answer that because you don't own it. You're not the developer, but it's a question that's out there. It's a legitimate question.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Okay. Rich, I do apologize. You did mention that you wanted follow-up after the question, so calling the last vote was my error. But seeing no other questions or comments from council, we'll proceed with the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six two. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm here for the next one, so I'm going to just.
Likely.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Moore, if you want to tee us up for the next one?
Yes, so consistent with the fact that that trust has been approved, we need to, like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to the State Department of Environmental Protection for pram revision for the new land development for the Trias project.
If, if you want me, this is.
My, I, I made the motion second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Carmenio, and if the applicant would like to explain, please. Wilson?
Sure, this is an amendment to the Borough Sewer Planning Ordinance, Planning Module that will extend the public sewer to Trias. So this is procedural. We've been working with the Borough. We've submitted the planning. We've been working with Public Works as well as P A D E P. So with, if, if we're getting this resolution, then this package will go to DEP for their review and approval. But it is basically to extend the service area to Trias. As part of that, we are working on including, you know, providing the ability for the existing homes to connect into the sewer along Fillmore and Township Line Road. This sewer planning module will address both Trias and the previously approved changes to Odessa. And as part of that, that was a requirement by both the Borough and P A D E P about providing the potential for connection to the existing homes.
Just to be clear, the developer would be installing the sewer extension as a part of its development?
Correct.
And this resolution is a, is simply a requirement from DEP anytime we're adding over a hundred and fifty units?
Yeah, let me clarify, clarify a couple of things. Our, our plant is licensed at so many million gallons per day, and each year we have to do what's called a chapter ninety-four, our report, which identifies our, our daily load over the course of the previous year. And then we factor in over a five-year period, all of the anticipated development, what's, what we see on the horizon, what the land that is available could, if it was maxed out, what all of that lays into there. And so we're, we're about half of what our plant capacity is today, including these things here with the development that we've got proposed. We've got plenty of capacity, so that's not the issue. We will be taking dedication. That's, that's what this is about. We'll be taking dedication of the main because it's over a hundred and fifty units. The difference between, say, Steel Works, which is three hundred and fifty units, is it's a direct connection into the street, whereas these are a hundred and fifty units coming into a main, coming into the system. So we have to account for that. We had to do the same thing at Odessa, Fillmore Village and Northridge.
A motion and a second. Questions on the motion, questions for the applicant?
I just, I just have a real quick question. Given that the latest multi-family density megaplex is going in, we kind of have to approve this, right? This part of it. This seems like this is a requirement.
Well, we, we have to show DE, we have to tell, what we're doing is we're telling DEP that we have the capacity and that, that we recognize we'll be taking dedication of the, of the main line into our system, our Act five thirty-six, Act five thirty-seven. So it's perfunctory, but yes, we have to do it.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Can I just ask a quick question? Previous Trias, did that? Previous TRS, did that vote include the waivers?
Yes, as stated.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. That's all from the Planning Commission, just to alerting everyone that the next Planning Commission meeting is October 13th, which is also Thursday.
Thank you, Brian. That will move on to Harb, with Dugan, we have the one item that we pulled from consent, B2.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Certificate of Appropriateness for Renovation and the Hardscaping Request for 37 Bridge Street as recommended by Harb 50.
Second.
So I asked that this be pulled simply because this is an item that irked me as a question more pertaining to strengthening Harb as the work has already begun prior to our vote. So it wasn't a slight to Harb, but more just a frustration that we have a committee, we have a Harb, we have staff, and regardless, the contractor goes ahead and starts to install the machinery regardless of our vote tonight. So I'm in support of the actual item, it's a frustration of the these shortcomings of Harb and wanting Harb to be a more robust organization. So hopefully with the help from staff consultants and the Harb Committee itself, we can work to strengthen that. So that's my grandstanding on that item for tonight. Without any other questions or comments on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, Mr. Kirchner with Regional Planning Committee.
Sort of caught me unawares there. Regional planning, not much happening, they had another meeting of their regional trail committee. A lot of excitement there about the, I guess, the Schuylkill River Freedom Trail coming through and also the Deval Trail from, coming up from Truro and through Charlestown. And also, West Pike Land sort of got a rap on the knuckles because they approved a zoning ordinance, the supervisors there approved the zoning ordinance with, in the residential district, some open space design options. And they had already received a review letter that it was not consistent with the regional plan. And being in the regional compact, West Pike Land is the newest member. I guess they joined a year or two ago. Being in the regional compact, your zoning ordinances have to be consistent with the regional plan before you enact them. So little work going on there to make that adjustment, but otherwise, not much going on.
Thank you, Rich. Ms. Dugan with Rec Board?
Okay, since we have the new rec center, we are, we've got lots and lots of programs going on. So I'm going to highlight the newer ones. And all of this is available on the website. So I recommend checking that out. So in additions, you'd like snowing, soccer, T-ball, art classes, pickleball, table tennis, Pilates, yoga, karate, all kinds of adult sports legs. We are starting off with some schools out, mini camps on the days that there is no school for, you know, just a single day off. So like, there'll be things like a day of like robotics or colorful silence. Some of the other things that you've seen before, like Snapology. But they're good, you know, just a one-day thing when school's out for the day. And then there's this, the new thing we're offering is Handyman University, which starts October 1st for four weeks, Saturday, October 1st for four weeks. And that's for 18 and older. That you can learn handyman skills and make useful projects, which I always thought might have been helpful for me earlier in life. Improv classes, this is for maybe to figure out public speaking, how to think fast on your feet, take risks, develop character. That's a fall, that's starting this fall for September 15th, six to eight to November 10th. And there is a youth, there's youth yoga up to 18 years old. And young rembrandts, we've done that before, but then there's another, we're doing Zumba again with Connie, and that starts the 12th, started the 12th. And then there's Chantai Chi, which is a promotes health, longevity, along with some self-defense. And that's Wednesday nights from 7:30 to 8:30. So there are some of our new things that we're doing. But we've also got all of our, everything that we normally do out there. So please check out the website and see if you can find something that interests you.
It's great to see the abundance of programming in our new rec center and couldn't be more happy with how that's turned out. Thank you, Dana. Ms. Webb with Beautification Advisory Commission.
And there was no meeting this month, but as President Ewald said, there are two vacancies on the Beautification Committee. So if anyone's interested in getting involved, you can reach out to your councilperson and we can help you get into that.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Ms. Berkeley with Tree Advisory Commission?
We met last night. We will be talking about when we go over policy and new ordinance that has been very much vetted. It's been about three months with TAC and then went to policy and it was reviewed. So I'm very happy to say it's been fully vetted with lots of input from our Tree Advisory Commission and from lots of input from our arborist. We also talked about just continuing to refine our process for investigations and reviews and making that a little bit more user-friendly for applicants and residents as they make requests about trees. So that, more to come on that. And we do have one opening on Tree Advisory Commission as well. I'll review all those when you turn things back over to me for police and personnel and public safety.
Very good. Moving on to Section 13 of our agenda, Council Action Referred from Committees. Ms. Berkeley with Police Personnel and Public Safety.
So again, no action to report at this time, but this is the committee where if you are interested in becoming a member of one of our civilian-appointed commissions or committees, we would interview you there. It's a very nice friendly interview, nobody needs to be afraid of it. We do have the two mentioned openings on the BAC, so that's our Beautification Committee. We have one on TAC, there's a lot of people that are very interested in open space and green space and very environmentally friendly initiatives out in the audience today. So this is my big plea, please get involved, we want you to be involved. And those are really great opportunities for you to get involved. We also have an opening on the Recreation Board at this time, as was discussed earlier with some of the resolutions acknowledging those who are no longer serving. So please reach out again to one of your council members or to me because it would come to that committee.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. Moving on to Parks and Rec with Mr. Moore, we have the one item that was removed from Consent Agenda, Item C2 on Consent. Mr. Moore?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary community event application for moving the park at Patton Albon Field on Saturday, September 24th, 7:30 PM to 9:30 PM, there will be a street closure. Recommended Committee 40.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Dugan, questions on the motion?
Just a question, where will that be on the ball field? Will it be on the infield or?
There was no specific discussion as to how it was laid out.
It'll be on the, so we're not going to be touching the baseball diamond. The screen will be kind of centered to the field is what Melissa and I have discussed, or angled. So it will be mostly like the outfield or where the soccer field is. And if so, if so works out, if families wanted to park their cars in a few spots, they would be able to do so and view the movie. I don't know that the audio is going to be good enough for that, but they have that opportunity. And then we will have like a little diagonal alley with vendors like across the other side of the field before you get the diamonds, it would not interrupt the diamond.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the motion?
Oh, and I am abstaining because I am involved with planning, obviously. And just to clarify, it said there's no street closures, just to make that clear.
Correct. Okay, any other questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero one. Mr. Moore? Anything else from Parks and Rec?
I'm sorry, thank you, no, nothing, nothing further.
Just as a heads up for your agenda for next week, on the 20th, I have asked council to put together information for putting together the dates for next year's bridge closure program with the proposal of May 26th through October 9th, that mimic what we did this year with the plan of trying to get the conversation started earlier this year and get all the feedback and that we need to make the decision, but also make it so all of our businesses downtown can also make their investments and plan for a closure next year. So that'll be on your agenda for Parks and Rec next week, the 20th, right?
But one item I did want to follow up on, thank you for reminding me. We had the preliminary survey results for the Phoenix Building Inside Out. We had them for the committee, do we have them in front of council yet or not?
I believe they are in your pack.
They're in the manager.
And that will bubble up through, that can be added to the packet for next week. And Parks and Rec can bubble back up for council next month as well. Okay, moving on, Ms. Kirchner with Policy Committee.
Yes, Mr. President, I will make a motion that we, the council schedule and advertise an ordinance to repeal and place Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Trees.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, Mr. Kirchner.
Yes, I will make a motion that council schedule and advertise an ordinance to amend Chapter 24 Taxation Special.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, and I did not see who seconded, sorry, Mr. Carmenio, thank you. And we'll turn it over to the solicitor for a brief explanation since it is not the standard.
Sure, there were some recent state law changes in what is permitted under the local tax collection law. And each municipality was required to enact these changes via ordinance. And essentially what it allows for is homeowners which can establish that they did not receive the initial notice of a delinquent real estate tax assessment, have a chance to prove that they didn't receive it. And any fees and penalties that accrued during that time will be wiped out. It's a one-time thing for a landowner, as in if they don't receive it the first time or they don't receive a notice of a tax and they demonstrate that they didn't receive it, at that point, they will have obviously known that there was a tax assessment against their property. So they couldn't then claim that they didn't get a second notice. So that's what this ordinance is proposing to do, it reflects the state law. And we intend to advertise it and I believe consider it next month.
Questions on the motion, questions on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, Mr. Kirchner.
Got nothing else, Mr. President, thank you.
Sounds good, Mr. Weiss with Infrastructure Technology Transportation Sustainable Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, no action to report this time, lots of good things going on. Our next meeting is one week from tonight on the 20th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan with Finance?
There was nothing left that was already, that wasn't already approved in the consent agenda.
Thank you. And with that, we'll open up the second and final round of public participation tonight. Again, members of the public wishing to make comment, if you can please sign in on the podium, the sign-in sheet on the podium, state your name, and if you're a resident or not, members joining us via Zoom, we will approach you after we move through the audience that's in the room with us tonight. We'll be limiting this round also to one hour of public participation. With that, anybody in the public that would like to make comment, please take the podium.
Hi, Lisa Longo, yes, I live in Phoenixville. One point I didn't make earlier when we were talking about the open space is there have been local municipalities that put a ballot measure. So it would be possible to establish a portion of our taxes to go to an open space fund. I think that's a great idea, right? We all want open space, how do we pay for it? So that's one idea. Another idea is, you know, you can have a referendum on this whole thing. Let taxpayers decide what they want to do, I think that's also brilliant. That's how democracy is supposed to work. The support we've heard is overwhelming, I've personally spoke to probably close to 1,000 people about this. And I've had one person, one person who's against the eminent domain idea. So we've talked to a lot of people. I also want to note that having women especially give their home address, when, I don't know if this is going to be televised as well, that strikes me as dangerous. It never hit me before tonight, that giving our address, so I just thought I'd mention that. And then the last thing, I was listening to Mr. Kirchner and I had read over the TRS proposal. There were some pretty big concerns brought up by the county commissioners. I guess I mistakenly made an assumption that those concerns would have been taken more seriously and responded to prior to approving this. This is against the recommendation of the Regional Planning Commission. Like, why bother being a part of it if you're not going to take seriously what they're telling you to do? They said it's too much density. They said one entrance is dangerous. They said these things need to be addressed. And it's like, what? What is the point? So I, as a former elected official, I just, I'm really struck by that because had I seen all of that, I certainly would have at the very least wanted some more information. So I appreciate what you all do, I know you probably talked about this for hours and read things that I didn't get to see. So I think as a member of the public, I know what it's like on this side, right? I don't have all the information you have. So quite possibly you know a lot more than me. But I did just want to point out how it appears to the public that there were some pretty big issues that were ignored. Right? And again, I'll make my plea for the eminent domain, that somebody tonight before the close of this meeting, make a motion, you can do it, we have a lawyer, we have talked to a lawyer about this. We have all of the information, if any of you want it, that not only is eminent domain the way to go, it is appropriate, it is legal, it is the best way to protect your community. And I would ask you to consider it again, thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Nicole Ossie, Phoenixville, Washington now. I just wanted two things, one, I did also agree with what a woman just stated about the topic that was discussed. And I was a little bit concerned that as part of the planning, or maybe, again, this is not information. I know, nobody asked any questions about if native species were going to be used in the butterfly gardens or anything like that. I don't know, maybe that's in the plan that you've already read. But as well as when you're replacing a stream, you know, what, what the, they've asked my brothers in construction and my uncles in construction, generally when they're asking for waivers, not always the best thing in my experience. At least that number of them, everyone asks for waivers. But that significant number of them was a lot that seemed to just kind of pass by. But you may have already reviewed those previously. So I was a little disappointed that there wasn't more questions around those waivers. Also, it's just a question, they made a comment towards making a donation of some sort. What was that about? Nobody asked any questions about that, generally anytime you're dealing with proposed deal in public, in my line of work anyways, it's considered a compliance issue when someone brings up some kind of donation that's going to be made. I don't know if you know what they were talking about, Solicitor, any chance?
This is public comment period, so I can't answer any questions.
Yes, got it, I remember, I do remember commentary, not question. The last thing I did want to mention was that I've attended a number of classes at the New Recreation Center. And the rooms were quite hot that I was in. You've paid quite amount of money for the state of the art HVAC system, so I would just. You've paid quite amount of money for the state of the art HVAC system, so I would just urge you before too much time has passed to take advantage of that investment and whoever the contractor was for the HVAC system and make sure it's up to spec to what it should be meeting and that they've properly trained any staff there before you go past a certain point of time, because I know, again, in my line of work, we're not very helpful after you've passed out of like your warranty date. So make that money work for you while you can, please, because it was, it was a bit overwhelming and the staff didn't seem to know how to accommodate that. They're just like, yeah, sorry, maybe we can move you to another room. So that otherwise lovely and thank you for all you've been doing.
Yes, just to follow on with regards to the kindergarten center. You have another council meeting before October seventeenth. On October seventeenth, common pleas court. School district will present the agreement of sale to the judge. It's our understanding that the judge has great deal of latitude. He can review the agreement and make sure that it's in accord with all the appropriate controls and precedents that are required for public sale, but he's also has the opportunity to make other judgments and acts. You may be aware that we have a sunshine complaint. We're hoping that the judge sees the sunshine complaint and calls into question the process of the sale. I'm hoping between now and next council meeting, conversations can be had amongst you to consider a motion next meeting to have the administration or one of you attend the common pleas court proceedings. Present your good intents and your interests that you've already made through the excellent bid that you made. And perhaps your presence, our presence, and the good consideration of the judge will hold off on this sale in some manner that we can work together or proceed with the very difficult matter of eminent domain that we feel is the only pathway forward. So I hope that you're able to consider that between now and council meeting. We'll be back.
Good evening. Again, David Lutzker, Morgan Street in the borough. The situation with the Triest project is disturbing. I don't only speak with people, my neighbors who are of like mind. And I know from my experience that things are more complicated than they seem at first and nuances lost on most people. And when I've explored something that I didn't understand or didn't make sense to me, I've seen that there are details that I didn't know about. But there has been discussion of this. I don't know what happened in the planning commission with the Triest project, but Mr. Kirkner brought forward the report from the PRPC. Again, you may have additional knowledge, but, but when I hear on the street and when I'm talking to someone, and of course, everyone has some complaint or another, but council always rolls over for the developer and do whatever they're asked. And I defend this council at every opportunity. But this action makes it more difficult, and I hope to have conversations and to understand it more. But of course, it may be too late because the vote has been had. It, it won't be the last opportunity to draw a line and understand that waivers are requests. And to do the right thing for the community. So on that score, I'll also reiterate, please make a motion to preserve the kindergarten center in public hands. Thank you.
Tom DeLuca, Ashburn Road in the Thelmore Village. Most of the items I was going to mention regarding this triest, that's how you say it, property were already covered. Mr. Kirkner pointed out many of my concerns. And the nice woman who spoke first also really covered much of what I was going to say. So I won't double up on those. But I have to imagine with the roles that you reach task with, you have so much on your plate where, of course, you rely on your planning commission. And their due diligence, due diligence and extensive research they do in these projects. So they gave you a seven oh vote to do this, but I just can't overlook the overwhelming dissent from both the Regional Planning Commission and the Chester County Planning Commission. Again, I'm learning a lot about local government this evening. One thing I thought we could have had a chance to speak before you had that resolution, but I guess that would have been back during the planning. So that's new to me and I'll take note of that. But it's just concerning that those items seem to be overlooked and this Kelly seemed to blame the need for many of those waivers due to the constraints of the property. Well, once again, the constraints then dictate what you should really do. Lack of parking, the, the, the turning radiuses, the narrow alleys, the limited open, open space, that is small patches here and there. That's not true open space. That's just space between buildings. I mean, open space is continuous. I view it that way. So I'm a little disappointed and I'll do better as a resident next time being there at the right, appropriate time and hopefully get to know some of you and and some of the other commissions to learn a little better about how to monitor stuff. I know your, your tasks are difficult, but I'm just disappointed without that.
Hi, my name is Elena Boschko. I'm resident of Washington Avenue in Phoenixville. I was not planning on speaking, so I'm not really prepared. I was moved by everybody's talking today and I want you to know that there are a lot more people who are interested in preserving the kindergarten area than there are here. I don't know if you saw me with my toddler son earlier today, my husband taking home. And there are a lot of families who want that area to be preserved, but they can't be here today because they have to put their kids. And to see what happened earlier was very concerning when I heard one side talking about hundred ninety seven homes and no, like, area for a kid. And you guys said it's okay. And I'm like, what are you guys doing? How it can be okay? And now you want to take another open space area from residents? It makes no sense. So whatever it takes, I think you have to do it for everybody who's not here, but had they known about this meeting, I known about it for two days. And we made sure we come. We are not there involved, but now that we're hearing these things are happening behind our backs and we're going to spread around, I'm sure there are more people becoming. And you guys have to make sure you can, you do whatever you can. Because there are people who are expecting you to do the best and you can't just side with developments. You can't, you know, it's old block brothers, they're famous for doing as little as they can. And I'm myself an engineer. I worked for a private company for a year. I couldn't take it. I went to public sector. Because when you come to the table and you're given a design project, you're required to do the minimum. And they're not going to go beyond what you asked them to do. So when you're siding with them, you know, you're not siding with us. And that's unfortunate.
Dan Weiser, Washington Ave. Like the last couple speakers mentioned, I will say that this is all very new to me. And it sounds like, and I would hope that there has been a lot of discussion on the Triest project before today. I, I'm a little disappointed, or maybe I'm just a little frustrated because from my perception, I saw what I think is very valid points and the developer that is, again, doing the bare minimum less than the bare minimum because they're getting interceptions. And I also looked at the plans, which seem to be very hard to find. But like was also mentioned, I think the, which immediately she's already left. But I think what was discussed was something about twenty five percent open space. I, that seems dubious to me, not as an educated person on, in the field, but it looks like everything they couldn't build on and they couldn't make profit off of is their open space. So I don't think that's really a benefit to the community. And again, very valid points, having only heard them tonight, very valid points were brought up. And again, what feels like a developer just kind of taking advantage of the community was all relatively dismissed or, oh, well, you know, we're allowed to do it. It's, it's within the zoning code, but then we say, well, is that really good for us? One way in and out for hundred ninety? Luckily, they cut out seven homes, but a hundred ninety homes. Is that, is that right? Sure, maybe it's okay by zoning, but I don't think it's right. So again, I'll reiterate that from the public side of things, only getting involved with the Triest project tonight didn't really go too well. Doesn't feel like we, our voices were heard or your own council members' concerns were recognized and the community is I don't know what other options there are at this point, because it sounds like that's pretty much a done deal. But seems like it's, it's kind of too late for the community. The developer already won. So, thank you. And I appreciate everyone that, that has actually made eye contact with me and is listening. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan Connolly. I'm part of Phoenixville Area Transition. I do not live in the borough. I live in Charlestown Township. But I hate to tell you this. I'm actually depending upon you also, even though I didn't vote for any of you. But we live in the same community and we use the same resources. I shop on Bridge Street. I have many friends in Phoenixville. And I consider this home. So the arbitrary lines that we have, townships in Pennsylvania kind of pit us against each other in some ways, as our society does anyway. And it doesn't really work. I, of course, am here to support open space and doing whatever you can politically to save the open space on the kindergarten center property. But I just have been observing tonight and have, in my life as a citizen, have attended many, many, many school board meetings and supervisor meetings. And it just dawned on me tonight how ineffective our system is. We can talk to you, but you don't have to respond. I mean, the basic human relationship is built on response and responsibility and how we listen to each other, use our heads and our hearts to figure something out. And this just doesn't work. So I don't know what the solution is. You guys have a lot of power. You've been, you've been, we're relying on you. So I don't have a solution. I just want to raise it up. That maybe we could do it differently and come to a solution that really benefits all of us, like being outside is so important to our humanity. And shabbing a shared space that we care for is important. So I know I'm from Charlestown, but Phoenixville is my home too. I'll put my name and address there.
Hi, I'm Krista Vall again, four forty six Grant Street. I used to be a resident of East Vincent Township and was happy to be part of a group that put together an open space referendum and we actually raised our taxes to preserve open space. East Vincent's not the only township that's done it. Charlestown has done it. Schuylkill Township has done it and all the surrounding townships have done it. And by doing that, we've actually saved open space out in the countryside and all that growth has gone in there into Phoenixville as it's amazingly become the place to be. But right now, if you look at all that is being proposed and you see it, Gene Cracks gives you reports, you see it in the planning commission, you know what's left in the little confines of the borough of Phoenixville. And we just learned tonight, but you guys have known this for a while, that you have traced and you have Odessa and everything else. There, there's nothing left except for this beautiful piece of property of the K Center that is in public hands. On February the eighth, you guys had the courage to put together a two-page resolution. I don't know if the community ever heard about it, but it's, it's part of public record. It's actually part of your records and you did a resolution to acquire by eminent domain a place for the Phoenix Wheel. And the community is incredibly appreciative of what you've done in creating a beautiful place in town to be able to have that as the trailhead. And then you had a four-page with the court and it was a done deal. It's not that hard. So the greatest truth in life are really always simple. You have a piece of property that you are in control of. You will ultimately determine what is built there or not built there. But thankfully, it's actually owned in public hands. You're not going against a developer or a private individual. You're going against an entity that actually got it from the borough and it's in public hands. And all you need to do is come up with a value of which just several months ago, you said you were going to pay over two million dollars for it. That's a pretty good start. So you had interest in it. So tonight I begged all one of you, just one of you. Rich Kirkner, you brought up some great things tonight. You can't do it at the end of the thing. You have to do it in the beginning. You, you talked about that. I'd have to imagine the Phoenix Regional Planning Commission would be against something happening there at the K Center. All it takes is a motion and a second and the process starts. It's just pages. Please. What will your legacy be? Would you be there for the K Center or would you be there for the cutting of the ribbon at Odessa and Triest? Maybe both, but this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. Once land is developed, it's gone. Open space is gone. Thank you for your time.
Seeing no one else coming up to the podium at the moment, we'll open up the second round of public participation for members joining us via Zoom. If you are joining us via Zoom and you'd like to make public comment, please raise your hand digitally. Member of our staff will unmute you and announce your name, letting you know that you can then make public comment and please make, please let us know your name and where you live. Seeing no hands digitally in the Zoom world, we will close the, the second round of public participation. Move on to communications and council participation for the final round tonight. Any questions from council or any follow-ups? There's two points I'd like to make. The Phoenix Wheel was not an eminent domain project. We've owned that land for six years. The eminent domain action was actually the neighboring lot is not associated with the Phoenix Wheel project. I do appreciate everybody coming tonight. Triest has been in the planning commission projects, agenda for the better part of the last two and a half years, possibly longer. Of our public, of our planning commission meetings are public meetings. They're all held in this room. Our last meeting was last Thursday at seven, six, six o'clock. And all these things, all these items have been discussed to the point where council did feel comfortable taking actions tonight. I know it looks as though it was a quick decision, but literally this has been a back and forth for the better part of the existence of COVID. With that, we do not have any pressing items under staff reports. We do have some items under executive session, so I will ask a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss updates on ongoing litigation.
Motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second. Motion made by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Good night. We will not be coming out for any voting items.